I don't know.
Mr. Sherman, where's the gavel?
Public notice of this meeting was given to all board members and associates in a notice dated August fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Adequate electronic notice of this public meeting has been provided specifying the time, place, and manner in which this meeting is being conducted. It was advertised in the Courier Post, posted in all schools, the administration office, municipal building, library, blood double center, Edward acres, hometown, and the Winslow Township post offices. Mission statement: The mission of the Winslow Township School District, a large, diverse, growing community, is to educate all students to become independent, lifelong learners, critical thinkers, and caring and competent members of their community. The district, in partnership with the community and in a climate of cooperation and mutual respect, will provide an academic environment which values excellence and diversity, encourages students to strive for personal excellence, and assists them in acquiring knowledge, skills, and attitudes necessary to contribute positively to a rapidly changing world. Roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Ms. Redden?
Here.
Ms. Glode?
Present.
Ms. Martin?
Present.
Mr. McManus?
Present.
Ms. Peterson?
Present.
Ms. Pitt?
Present.
Mr. Thomas?
Present.
And Mr. Shaw?
Present.
We have a call.
Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Before everybody sits, can we please take a moment of silence for, because we just recently lost a teacher at school one, and not only that, tomorrow is nine eleven, and like to take a few, a moment for that as well. All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Our twenty-five, twenty-six districts' school goals?
Our twenty-five, twenty-six district goals: One, student achievement: continue to implement research-based best practices for delivering instruction and accelerated learning for all students, including all subgroups. This shall include: One, conduct weekly administrative walkthroughs to monitor teaching and learning; Two, utilize the district diagnostic assessment platform; A, analyze student data to inform and guide instruction; B, to monitor and track measurable growth in the E L Ed and mathematics in grades one through nine; C, to implement creative ways to accelerate student learning by providing additional support throughout and beyond the school day; Number two, promote a positive environment for students and staff; One, enforce the code of conduct to ensure safety for students and staff and in compliance with district policy; Two, incorporate social emotional learning opportunities for students to celebrate positive behaviors; Three, develop strategies for students with significant behavior to reduce the interruption of instructional time, decrease negative action, and improve student attendance; Three, and our final one, increase stakeholder engagement: One, improve, A, improve and expand innovative opportunities to increase parent communication; B, create parent learning opportunities with a focus on how to support their student's learning; and the final one, continue to share the accomplishments of Winslow students in all student activities.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Moving on to awards and presentations. Mr. Davis?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Pursuant to New Jersey statute eighty-eight thirty-seven dash thirteen and New Jersey Administrative Code six A sixteen dash five point three, I appear to report and seek approval for Winslow Township's whole district's school safety data, which includes information on the district's weapons, violence, vandalism, substance abuse, and harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidents for the period of January one, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Board members, in your packets, you should have a copy of the chart, our incidents for this second reporting period are as follows. School number one, for HIV, there were four alleged or confirmed incident for a total of five HIV incidents. There were zero weapons, violence, vandalism, or substance abuse. So, school number one had a total of five incidents for that reporting period. School number two, for HIV, there was one confirmed incident, and then there was zero weapons, violence, vandalism, or substance. So, there's a total of one incident for that reporting period. School number three, there were three confirmed HIV incidents, and then zero weapons, violence, vandalism, or substance abuse, for a total of three incidents at school number three. School number four, there was one alleged HIV incident, one weapon, which was an airgun, for a total of two incidents at school number four. There were zero violence, vandalism, or substance abuse. School number five, there were nine alleged HIV incidents, three confirmed, for a total of twelve incidents. There was two incidents with a weapon, one was a handgun, one was a knife, and then there was zero violence, vandalism, and substance abuse, for a total of fourteen incidents. School number six, there was one alleged HIV incident, six confirmed, for a total of seven HIV incidents, zero weapons, there was one fight, zero vandalism, and zero substance, for a total of eight incidents at school number six. Middle school, there was three alleged HIV, nine confirmed, for a total of twelve HIV incidents, zero weapons, there were twenty-seven instances of violence that were characterized as ten fights, fifteen assaults, one threat, and one sexual contact, zero vandalism, and seven instances of substance abuse, which are characterized as three undetermined substance, one drug paraphernalia, one marijuana, one alcohol, and one unauthorized prescription gel, for a total of forty-six incidents at the middle school. And then our high school, there were thirteen alleged HIV incidents, two confirmed, for a total of fifteen HIV incidents, zero weapons, there were four instances of violence, which are characterized as three fights, seven assaults, two thefts, and two threats, zero vandalism, and six instances of substance abuse, which were five with marijuana and one with alcohol. They had a total of thirty-five incidents at the high school. So, looking at our totals for this period, for HIV, there was a total of fifty-six, for weapons, a total of three, violence, a total of forty-two, vandalism, zero, substance abuse, thirteen, for a grand total of a hundred and fourteen for this reporting period. Any questions from the board?
I do have a question. It's not really the tendency, it's just, what is the policy like? So, let's say, for example, the high school, we had thirteen HIV, three fights, who's ultimately, who do we hold accountable for that?
Well, with HIV, and I talked to that, in letters go out the beginning, for anyone who doesn't know with HIV incidents, that has, investigation has to take place within a couple of days of it being reported, and there's a ten-day window in which they have to conduct investigation, et cetera. So, letters go out in the beginning, letting parties of, you know, the victim, as well as the aggressor, know that something has been reported, and it's being investigated, and then at the end of it, letters go out to both sides, letting them know the findings. So, the counselors at the respective schools are the anti-bullying specialists, so they're the ones for doing the investigation, but the administrators are the ones to do the consequences and the discipline for it. So, it is tracked, we use this, my K-12, we've been using probably about ten years, so I can go when, if we can look at, let's say, repeat offenders and that type of stuff, and also track the behavior.
I guess what I meant, is there any policy to try to alleviate or decrease these numbers from the building administration?
Well, to be honest with you, they've been going down. So, when I look back, last year, our numbers are identical for this reporting period, however, when I went back to twenty-three, there were one fifty-six. So, we were one fifty-six two years ago, last year for this period, we were one fourteen, and this year, we're at one fourteen.
Great report.
Usually, you'll see the numbers will tick out the second half of the year, when we come back after whatever break. So, in the beginning, the first reporting period, they're low, you just got back. The second half, they've been here for a while, after holidays, numbers are usually higher, but we've been, right on, these last two years, we've been at one fourteen.
Good job.
The only thing I saw difference in the three years is the number of weapons. And I just wanted to look at that. Substance abuse is broadly defined, however, the weapons is my concern. So, thank you for that comment about where we were at last year this time and this year.
Just to reiterate, you had said that you were able to track, like, the individual students to see who were repeat offenders?
Right.
Thank you.
Yep.
It appears that, if I'm hearing you correctly, that there's been an uptick with regards to the incidents with weapons?
Well, I didn't necessarily say that, I think, Ms. Peterson.
No, I just said that it increased. I think there was one last year of a possible weapon, and I think that...
I can tell you, I have it here. No, so last year, we did the same, um, that was the first actual... No, we were three. So, from January one to twenty-fourth to June thirtieth to twenty-fourth, there were three, and there's three.
Okay.
So, we were the same this time last year, and then when I looked at this reporting period for twenty-three, it was zero.
Right.
But again...
And so, the weapons and questions were...
Here, we had an airgun, a handgun, and a knife.
Maybe we, perhaps we may want to take a look at our policy with regards to the instance of weapons.
Okay.
Ms. Pitt, according to state statute, if there's an act committed, or someone brings a handgun into the school, it's, there's an ability, and I know that we've done this because the boards had zero tolerance for that kind of thing, and has been very vocal about it for a number of years. It's an automatic expulsion.
Is there any way, at each individual school, we can require the board, the school principal to give us, like, a quarterly evaluation on updates on how maybe we could better monitor this type of situation, or try to alleviate it, alleviate it altogether?
What's this, I'm sorry, what situation are you in?
I mean, just the whole, you know, what are we doing as administrators, as a building principal, to make, to monitor their situation any closer? What policies do they have in policy, in turn, or regulations, or internally do they have in place for this type of thing?
Ms. Clement?
If you're talking about for HIV, for harassment, intimidation, and bullying, there are counselors in every building that do different events throughout the month for children, and trying to make them up standards, not high standards, trying to make sure that they are educated as to what is an appropriate act in school, what's not an appropriate act in school, the counselors do lessons throughout the buildings, so they're there to support them should they need that, but they're also there to also help any student and to provide educational pieces throughout, throughout the year, depending on the month, it could be a monthly thing with regard to kindness month, or something like that, you'll see those reports in bulletin boards and different things, so the counselors across the district try to do programming that addresses that.
Thank you.
And I meet with them, like, once a month, every other month, when we address that, because as you'll notice, a lot of times when we record, that's when we're approving the HIV report, so I oversee all the HIV stuff versus the weapons, violence, that kind of, you know, unfortunately, comes as it, you know, comes up, that's more at the building end, but I do oversee and meet with the counselors frequently to address HIV, and our numbers have dropped dramatically. Those that have been on the board for a while, when you see the reports, the numbers have gone down dramatically in reference to, let's say, one of the schools.
I have a question. I'm gonna piggyback kind of off of Mr. Thomas, in regards to the question of, who is the overall accountability, or who is overall being held accountability in each facility and the school to make sure that these numbers do decrease? And when fights happen, or the guns happen, who's the custodian, and are we holding that custodian accountable for the things that's happening inside their buildings?
Well, I don't, well, the principals are there, you know, they're in charge of the buildings, per se, so as the things come up, it's our responsibility to investigate and, et cetera, and report out, but unfortunately, things, you know, happen, I don't know how you can...
So, it's, so it's fair to say that if a fight breaks out in the school, right, we can't hold the principal accountable for that fight, but what we can do is ensure that we follow the right protocols for HIV to make sure that we don't happen in the future.
Right.
So, no one individual should be held accountable for when two students get into a fight, am I correct?
You are correct, Ms. Lord, so in fact, we try to reach out to the parents, there are multiple movements throughout the schools for social emotional learning for students, but unfortunately, we can't control things that happen in the neighborhood, sometimes spill into our schools, it's not, no principal would tell you that they want to have any fight or incident in their buildings. Our job is to make sure that our students are following the policies and procedures when they're in school, and we're hopeful that in partnership, that the parents would do the same when they're at home, teaching their children the same responsibilities that they should have at home as a good citizen, as they would when they come to school.
I concur on that, so, so it's fair to say that even on the athletic world, or the band world, or the theater world, after-school activities, if there's a fight between the kids, will we hold the coaches accountable for that fight?
Well, Ms. Lord, it depends on the situation, so if, if there is a situation where there is supposed to be supervision, and something was not done following the policies, as you said, then it depends on what a situation could be, I don't think I can give you a global answer, or, or really answer what you're looking for, is holding someone responsible for something. An individual act is the responsibility of that child, of that person, that how we respond to that, we follow the board's policies on how we handle that, so I can't say because Teresa Clement had a fight on the field, that it's Mr. Davis's fault that I did that.
Okay.
Now, if I ignore it, and look away, and allow it to happen, that's different.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we have a motion to approve Mr. Davis's HIV presentation?
I move, Mr. President, that we approve Mr. Davis's HIV report presentation.
Redden, second.
All in favor? Moving on to correspondence.
We have known this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. Moving on to our board minutes, and I have a motion to approve our meeting minutes from our special meeting, open and closed session for August twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Mr. President, I move that we approve our board meetings, minutes for the Board of Education, special meeting of August twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Did you say open and closed session?
Yes, ma'am.
Redden, second.
We're doing it individually.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
Abstain.
Ms. Redden?
I would have to say, the date is not correct, it's the twenty-first, not the twenty-third.
It says August twenty-third.
Instead of twenty-first, it's twenty-third.
Twenty-first.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. Ms. Glode?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitt?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Abstain.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Can I have a motion to approve our meeting minutes from the Board of Education Regular Meeting from August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, open and closed session?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the following board minutes. From the Board of Education, our regular meeting, which was held August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, both open and closed session.
Redden, second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Redden?
Yes.
Ms. Glode?
I have a question, just, I'm asking.
Yes.
I have a correction in regards to, on the page five, on August twenty-seventh, Minutes meeting notes, item number fifteen. According to this email that we all received in our email, and I made a copy for everyone if they would like to see it, it was actually the strike off the New Jersey, New Jersey Garden City Alumni Chapter of South Jersey Alumni, in the chap, is the chapter of Delta Sigma, the South Jersey, they're the ones who actually endorsed.
So, you're on, Ms. Lord, you're on page five?
Five.
August twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Okay, what number?
Item fifteen.
Fifteen is on page six, is it in what section, Ms. Lord?
Page five, it's in under...
Are you, did you, do you have the pages from the...
I just, I made a copy of the page from home.
Is it the...
It's the actual minutes.
It's the minutes?
Not off of your, your typed up, not minutes, I need to look back on yours.
Is it in my section?
No, no, I'm just saying, what minutes do you need me to give it to you from?
I'm asking you where you found the correction.
Off of the original minutes that was from the board.
Okay, so is that on the agenda?
Yes, that's on the agenda.
Okay, so the agenda and the minutes don't come up, right?
Yes, I'm, it's on the agenda from August the twenty-seventh, I apologize, on page five, item number fifteen.
So, what's the, what's the title?
It should just, it's, it should say, it says, "High School Voter Registration Information Session."
It's actually page six.
What she's asking is to remove New Jersey Garden City Alumni Chapter of Delta, and it's only with South Jersey Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Ceti already.
What item number?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, and it's the same one, it's the minutes. This is...
So, it's the High School Voter Registration Information Session, okay?
South Jersey.
Oh, so we're gonna take off the New Jersey Garden City Alumni Chapter?
Yes.
And you want it just to be the South Jersey?
Yes.
Thank you so much. And now, yes, this is my response.
Is everybody else in agreement with this?
Mrs. Pitt, do you agree to amend your motion?
Yes, I do.
Ms. Redden, you agree to second that?
Yes.
Roll call with...
I'm just writing, I'm sorry. So, it's correcting. So, Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Redden?
Yes.
Ms. Glode?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitt?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Abstain.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Use to prove the minutes as amended.
Moving on to board may reports. Mr. Thomas? I know you can't wait for this one.
No, no, it's just an update, just an update.
Oh, I know, we got the big football game coming up on Friday.
We do, but just an update, we got other, other teams are playing, our board soccer is zero and two, but they are playing hard. Our girl soccer is making a little noise, they're two and one, and looking for more wins. Girls volleyball gaining a lot of achievement, but they are oh and four. As you well know, we played IMG, we fought a good fight, we fell, but we, we, we won in pride, and we won in achievement against IMG, you know, the city, and the place was packed, packed, and we visited Highland, and we beat them forty-seven, nothing, and come in Friday night, we got Bergen Catholic, Bergen Catholic is considered the number one school in New Jersey, and they're coming to Winslow High to get a taste. That's my little updated for our athletic...
I'm sorry, Mr. Thomas, what was the tail end of what you had just said, I got the whole, your Bergen High is coming to...
Bergen Catholic is number one in the state of New Jersey, and they're coming to Winslow High to get a little taste of Winslow.
Oh, I, I get that, thank you.
Find food.
Mr. President, may I say something also?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, just so you all know, because I'm a big football person, IMG is rated number seven in the nation. Winslow Township is rated number two hundred and thirty-one out of sixteen thousand high school football teams in New Jersey, I mean, in the nation, so, and, yeah, so, when we look at the accomplishments that our football team did, and the coaching staff, and how they handle our players on the field, not just academically, but athletically, we need to make sure that we support our, our football team, our basketball team, our baseball teams, our band, our theater, everyone that's participating in all these extracurricular activities, because Winslow Township, we're doing some great things, and it's not just the athletic department, and so many people think that we're only gauging on just the athletic department, but many of the scholarships that left out of our school last year, many of those students were athletes, they were student athletes, so we want to make sure that as we continue to support our students in our school district, we support any endeavor in extracurricular activities that they do, we give them the utmost support to the parents and to the coaches, and make sure that we keep it a positive environment, because Winslow Township has now been placed on the map more so than ever, and if you listen to any of the commentation that came across after the IMG, they said, "Yeah, Winslow Township may have lost, but they were winners." Okay, because they came out and they fought at that game, so we really have a great, a great school district, great students, a great staff here at Winslow Township, and I want us to keep things moving positively, so that we can keep moving forward in the innovative world that we live in right now. Thank you.
I believe the statement was, the rest of the Garden State should look out.
Oh, yeah, the nation should look out, the nation, because we're two thirty-one right now, out of sixteen thousand.
The ratings I looked at, it had us in the top, in the top one hundred ninety-something.
Yeah, we may moved up since the IMG game, yeah.
Top twenty-something, but...
Mr. President?
Yes.
I want to mention, I was at both games, and they were fantastic, but I have to applaud our cheerleaders and our band, they did an outstanding job, so in both arenas, I was very proud, but also Highland, if you were a board member, you went in for it, they never asked for anything, and if you were a senior citizen, it was only one dollar, but it was fabulous on both sides, Highland was packed, and so was the other game, but our cheerleaders and our band were amazing.
Before we move on from the athletic stuff, I know not many people in here probably watched the VMAs, yes, no, maybe? Okay, anybody notice, one of our Winslow graduates with Lady Gaga?
Yes.
One of our Winslow graduates was a dancer with Lady Gaga.
Yes.
He was part of the dance, they were part of the dance corps.
He was part of the dance, they were part of the dance corps. On the VMAs.
Yep. Sunday, nice, on CBS. So just, just saying that, you know.
It's on Instagram.
Winslow, Winslow was on TV on Sunday, Joe Casey. Moving on to our Citizens Advisory Committee, Ms. Martin?
Ms. Webber?
Good evening, members of the board. I already caught the back-to-school crush, as we could see, so I came in to read my report, and then I'll keep my credit with me. My daughter is thankfully not affected as of yet. And just to kind of piggyback off of what Claude was saying too, last night, I was able to attend the high school back-to-school night. Great job by all of the staff, and one of the staff members actually mentioned that she had a student graduate with enough college credits that she almost had an associate's degree. So academically, we are doing amazing things, and I was astounded by the number of programs that are available for our students. I know my daughter is excited about some, my other daughter can't wait to get up there for the STEM degree, so, pleasure. So we are very happy. So before I get on to, I know we're a little behind with our CAC meeting notes, but before I hit August and September, I wanted to go back to our July recommendations to kind of get an update on where the board was with that. Uh, the first one being about revisiting the policy about volunteer, and using that to address the gaps and the shortages. I also heard from the HSAs as well, that they were utilizing community volunteers, and there's been some change in that, and community members are no longer allowed to come in and help with the HSAs if they don't have a student in that school. So if there was any update from the policy committee on that.
No update at this time, but it, it's coming. Because this is something that the CAC has talked about previously, but it is an issue, and it can be resolved to everybody's satisfaction. But no, we have not forgotten it.
That's okay, I'll come up and remind you.
Good.
Let's see, our other recommendation was on the status report on tutoring program effectiveness and participation by our students last year.
That one.
Now, Mr. Shaw, maybe two weeks, you have more than fourteen hours.
That one, I'm I, I will have to get back to you on that one, I promise you, I that one fell through the cracks on me. I'm sorry about that one. I will get back to you on that. So.
I'll forgive you this one time.
Were you asking, may I ask a question? Were you asking about the number of participants that were in our after-school programs?
Yeah, the number of participants and whether or not there was any, like, progress, or the teacher staff or noticed any, you know, increasing.
I know in the education committee report, there was mention of that, and I can't remember which month, but I can try to pull that out with Mrs. Martin.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. The other one was following up on the policy committee exploring the academic and arts whole thing.
We did, um, we did hear what you said. We have not moved to discuss that at this point, but we will going forward.
Circle back to that one again. And an update on the technology audit, and when we expect that to be completed, and the results shared with the community.
That one, I did talk to Ms. Clement tonight about that. You, you were saying that. Monday, yes. So that is an ongoing process, but as you said, a meeting is scheduled for Monday. So there, the district is working on it to get that moving.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Is that meeting that's scheduled for Monday, is that with the vendor?
It is.
Thank you.
So I will go into our August meeting. We met August seventh from six forty-seven to eight fifteen, in attendance were Ms. Claude, Ms. Thomasella, Ms. Rendoli, myself, Ms. Vega.
Mr. Lamont.
Lamont, thank you. And Ms. Hoffman. We really didn't have any recommendations coming out of that meeting, other than we continued talking about the volunteer policy, how there are outside community members who are being approved as volunteer members for certain things, namely sports. We discussed the search for the interim superintendent. We also discussed flyer distribution issues with regards to other outside entities being able to advertise in our district. We discussed the Chromebook distribution, and the devices were available, but delayed pending a policy committee action. We also discussed the unpaid lunches and the significant unpaid balance. And maybe some clerical solutions to that. Transparency was also discussed, and urging the VOE to communicate decisions clearly to the public. Language accessibility, suggested use of translators at back-to-school nights. So again, you know, we continue talking about the volunteer, the interim superintendent, alternatives to flyer distribution being email, where the call is on the website, because we know these flyers are not going home with our children anyways, or they end up a scratch paper. I know my children do that. So, yeah, and everybody answers our text messages. I know we've talked about text messaging before. I think that would be very useful. So that was for August. There was no recommendations coming out of there. Now, September, we met September fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, from six thirty to seven thirty-five. Those members in attendance, all business, we review the volunteer policy again. Obviously, we've been working on this one for some time. Status update on the technology audit, still there. We discussed our August notes. Oh, the other thing that I forgot about July, we were checking the procedure on the policy for CAC members, so that'll come up in my recommendations. We talked about, again, the discharging of the over five hundred thousand dollars of lunch debt. There was some discussion where it used to be that the district would notify parents when they had a balance. I know that went away last year, because I stopped getting notifications. Let's see, we talked about the CAC meeting that is to be put in forty-eight hours in advance. We discussed briefly the Board of Education meeting candidates tonight, and whether that was going to be held at the school. There was a concern brought by a CAC member that already the internet was out the first day of school at high school, and they were taking attendance via paper and pencil. And then there was some discussion about the, the after-school tutoring, and whether or not it was available. Another big thing that came up and will come in on our recommendations was the before-after care for four-year-olds. So apparently, we have it at our early childhood education center for the three-year-olds. They get to their home school, they don't have it again until they move up to kindergarten. So a lot of parents were expressing some serious concerns about that, that lack there, and having to scramble to find alternative means. And then the other recommendation is looking at the lunch debt situation and how we're dealing with that, so we don't find ourselves in that situation again, and the CAC procedure for this coming year. So that was a lot. Open to questions.
Ms. Neves has a question. On your new business, one, two, three. The third one down, where it said, VOE candidates' profits of getting word out of prospective candidates. I believe last year that there was an extensive conversation about that, and it, and it was, the result was that the district would not in any way participate in that whatsoever.
Yes, we also discussed that during the meeting as well.
Okay.
As far as the before-and-after care for the four-year-olds. I know, talking to Ms. Clement tonight, they're starting to put out now about the four-year-olds not have, with the three-year-old program, not having it next year, so that way the, the three-year-olds are prepared next year for not having the, the after-school, before-and-after school program for the four-year-olds. Because it's no, it's not offered anywhere in the school district.
So is it the same company that provides it as the early childhood education center?
So, Ms. Neves, the Early Childhood Education Center is a unique situation in that it's a self-sustained standalone building. The state regulates what can be done in that program as far as preschool. We have the capacity to service students with naptime rooms, changing stations, et cetera, in the Early Childhood Education Center, which is why we were granted approval. We do not have that in schools one through four, where the preschool students have been, and quite frankly, we haven't had preschool in our before-and-after school program for a long time. It's been kindergarten on, and Ms. Murphy, you can attest that that has not been a thing. We can't get the approval because we don't have the facilities. And what we will do is to try to make sure, and I actually had a conversation recently with Ms. Harrison, is that the folks who are coming out of the three-year-old program are aware that it's a luxury for them because of the situation of the building. However, with the four-year-old program, they will have to await a year until kindergarten, as we have had to do for over ten years, I think, for that to happen. So it, it may be inconvenient, we apologize for that, but it just is, we, we don't have the approval to do that from the state.
Okay, okay. And Ms. Shaw?
So I do want to say something on a different note. I would like to thank every single member of the CAC. I would like to thank every single member that's on the CAC that diligently give their time on those one night every month, Thursday, to come out and share what the community has to offer and bring it to the board, because the things that you all are bringing to the board is making momentum in our school district. It was the CAC who brought, brought, brought to light on the, the technology audit. It was the CAC who's, who's consistently, consistently adamant about how can we get more community members involved in our school district by, through a volunteer program, and making sure anyone that's eligible and that is vetted can come and actually volunteer in our school district to kind of help relieve some of the situations that's going on in our school district. I thank you for everything that you're doing, and is, is very commendable, commendable for all of you citizens to, to be a part of this, this group, and I hope that we continue to have the same people that were on the board last year and the year before last, and we bring, bring more commen, more community members to come out and be a part and participate in it as well, because it is essential that we do get to hear what the community has to say to us, and they actually go through you to bring it to us, because not all of us can actually talk to everyone in the community. So thank you so very much for everything that you all do. I appreciate you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Claude. I definitely appreciate that. So on a nice little segue from that, do we have a policy for next year's CAC?
A policy for next year's CAC?
Well, it's the rubric for who gets on the CAC depends to change every year, so we were just wondering what we should tell the community for this year.
At this point, what you can tell the community is, is this, that the CAC policy actually has had very little change. The changes that did take place last year had to do with the fact that, as was reported, there was not a lot of participation with regards to the members coming out. Yes, that is correct. And so the policy basically is an open-door policy, as you well know, Ms. Neves, and that is that if you're interested, if you're interested, then fine, you can contact the board, let the board know that you're interested. There was a time when the board would at least want to you to come in and speak with you. But there's no quote-unquote requirements or expectations, and if we're looking at it from that perspective, the only requirement would be is that you, you are a concerned and involved resident of this community.
Do we have specific dates?
October is when we start taking our CAC applications.
October through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
And will there be an interview process this year? Because I know last year we did not have an interview.
It all depends on how many applicants we get.
Exactly.
And that'll be advertised on the website and all the good things, right?
As it has been in the past.
I'm gonna make the announcement after you're done.
Well, I will now take my germ and my child home. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, young Ms. Neves, for coming tonight, and Ms. Neves. Moving on to our education committee, Ms. Martin?
We have a meeting scheduled for Tuesday, September twenty-third, at four o'clock, the event.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. McManus, marketing committee?
Nothing at this time, sir.
Ms. Redden, operations committee?
It's Tom, Mr. President.
Ms. Pitts, policy committee?
Policy committee will meet on September twenty-fourth, which is our regularly scheduled board meeting. We meet at six o'clock prior to our regularly scheduled board meeting. So that is, our next meeting will take place, September twenty-fourth, six o'clock.
Thank you very much. Mr. Thomas, the.
Yes, I do have something I'd like to report on economic development.
Okay.
They didn't have a meeting, but I did go to the township meeting last night, showed it to several other board members, and at the end of the meeting, there was an hour-long discussion involving the school district and Dr. Potteed, and the ability to be able to house incoming students from all the development. It was, it was a lustrous conversation, because even Mr. Joe Gallagher cited, you know, some, some finds that he had got directly from Dr. Potteed, that I think we need to update and upgrade. We need to have a more urgent collaboration with the township, and if we can't do the township, but have a statement of how many students are in our school, and what grade limits can support additional families and additional kids, and what grade limits can't, because per that conversation, it seemed, it seems like that we can support five hundred more kids, however they come, and we need to be in lock, stop with what's going on with the township, because they are definitely putting out housing units and, and, and bringing kids, and even with the Ankor State Hospital that's proposing a new jail, it will have an impact on what we're doing here in the school, and if we can't get a collaboration with it, we need, need to at least have what our ask would be, or what we would need in place for our own application, so we can present it to whoever, to whoever comes knocking on the door from our own standpoint.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
If you please, if you recall, again, the township committee meeting, you're correct, you were there, Ms. Peterson was there, and I was there. Unfortunately, Ms. Peterson and I left prior to the discussion that you're mentioning right now, and I think it's important that the board should know that Dr. Potteed, before he left, had given us, and I hope that we all have it, he, he gave us a, an idea, excuse me, of how many are enrolled currently in the school in the maximum capacity, and I think we should all remember that as far as enrollment, and Ms. Clement, it's Mr. Maury Kirkman, if I'm wrong, I do believe that the second week in October is when the Department of Education requires districts to send to them what the enrollment is, and that's on an annual basis. And so that, that information, Mr. Thomas, is ongoing, and it's, 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 we're going into October, so by the second week of October, we as a district should know our current enrollment and our maximum capacity, because just to remind us, when Dr. Potteed gave us this report last year, the high school's current enrollment was one thousand two hundred forty-nine, the maximum capacity was one thousand five hundred ninety-three. The middle school, the current enrollment was seven hundred and eighty-three. The middle school can hold maximum capacity, one thousand three hundred thirteen. School number six, current enrollment, five hundred twenty-six, maximum capacity, eight-ten, and so that I won't take up too much time, but the point that I'm making is this, with the new developments that are coming, and if we get students who are coming here, we can handle it.
If I may add on to that. I know that we can handle the per se bodies of students in here, but we need to make sure that we're properly staffed to handle all the students there.
You want to go hand it in?
No, don't, no, don't. I'm not trying to argue with you. We, we right now, currently, on the agenda, we're having people, teachers, taking extra periods, right? So is that coincide with saying that we have enough teachers for every student?
Does it coincide now, at this point?
Okay, so I just want to make sure that in the future, as we continue to develop in our community, and as you know, they are, they, they got projects that they haven't even listed to us yet, that they're trying to build in our community. So, and we still got projects that are already been approved, that they haven't even broke ground on yet. So we have lots of, lots, and I know kids leave out of the school district, but we still have from pre-K now all the way up to twelfth grade, so you gotta, we gotta make sure that from the, which I know they're gonna do a effective and accurate report when they give it to us in October. and accurate report when they give it to us in October, but, um, having the seats is not the same as having the instructions in front of them for the seats. And as we all have been saying for years now, since I've been coming to the CAC board for the last four, I mean, come to the board since the last four years, there's a teacher shortage. So we all know that that's, that's, that's nationwide. So I just want to make sure that as we are saying that we can handle the students that come in, we can handle them, but not just handle them, we have the right amount of staff to be able to, to educate our students at the same time.
Mr. President, Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to say, uh, onto that, a lot of the developments are fifty-five and older. So a lot of them are not, no.
Me on the planning board, not all of them are fifty-five, never.
I said a lot of them.
Not, not a lot of them.
No.
No.
Mr. President, uh, for some of us, this conversation came up two years ago with the, um, development and opening up the townhouses in Ward Three. It was then that there was people from the township that we asked the same questions of them. They, township has a committee now, the education committee.
Yes.
I'm not aware of who's on it, because it used to be this citizen's, it used to be, um, the citizens advisory, where we were collectively together, the liaison. But now it's education committee. However, our classroom, and Ms. Clement, you can, uh, confirm, our classroom sizes are small, relatively small. Some districts, and those that teach, some districts have a little bit larger. I'm not advocating for that, because I believe in the best educational experience that our students can receive. But we could go up in some of those classes by three to five students. And then, you're nodding. I think three to five students, that's how you look at it. So it has to be a strategic plan for growth. This was brought up two years ago. I think we need to work with the township and get, uh, uh, economic development planning to find out where are the actual, um, people and where are they going to school? Because they may be coming from another district, going private or whatever. We need to have that kind of information. That takes a strategic committee to actually get that information.
And I concur.
And reject that for three years.
I concur, Ms. Peterson, because we do recall that at our retreat, we did have two board goals, and one of our board goals was that our board would begin to be, um, to, to have a better interaction with that township council.
And as you guys all are mentioning about our township, one of my main plans is to speak with our mayor, um, as we move into October. And we will be setting up a meeting, um... So that, that's, because as we all stated in August with our board goals, so that, and the education committee, you know, we, we don't see any of them here tonight, but they, we do always see members from the township here, from their education committee, to make sure that, like, uh, you know, we have members of the board at township meetings to make sure that we have, you know, as we see the members from the township here, so that way we can collaborate and make sure that we accomplish that one board goal, that way we can make sure that, as Mr. Thomas, you know, brought up, the, um, the numbers align with what the group, township grew, so that way we, if it does expand and explode, we're not sitting with our, you know, fingers twiddling, you know, you know, in, in our seats. Um, that way we can leave our administration with enough time to be able to plan for that growth. So, you know, that was one of the things that, you know, I want to be able to make sure that we, you know, I talked to the mayor about, because I, you know, sitting on the planning board, when developments like the D.R. Horton Development that's coming to choose landing in Sicklerville Road, that they're getting ready to start, because right now they're sitting there taking apart, uh, some of the vacant houses and doing sewage upgrades over there.
How many units?
Five hundred and forty-four. So, which is a downgrade from the almost eight hundred that they were gonna put over there, because they're leaving the open lot over behind School Six for, um, for whatever Winslow Township wants to deal with it. So that's one of the, you know, that's coming, and it's gonna come, as soon as they start building it, you're gonna see a lot of chaos and traffic, unfortunately, which is one of the things Committeeman Flomenia and I, very, you know, we're outspoken about with... Were you there at the meeting when, when we complained to the trap, uh, the traffic engineer about it? Because I know you show up to our, all our meetings. Yep? Ms. Tully, you're, you're participating in everything.
Could you speak up, John?
Uh, you need me to speak up louder?
Yes, thank you.
I, I asked you where you were at the planning board meeting when, uh, Mr., uh, Committeeman Flomenia and I spoke up into the traffic study, uh, engi- or traffic engineer for the D.R. Horton Development.
The vast traffic study was amazing. I sent to the police chief, get ready for accidents on Cali and Sicklerville, uh, after she was leaving the road.
And they came out.
They want to make two left-hand turns to go toward Williamstown Road.
Because it's gonna be an absolute mess, and they came out and did another one. They sat over by the, my development coming off the Atlantic City Expressway and then tried to tell us that there are not enough cars to warrant more stop signs, more traffic lights.
They're even talking about a traffic light there.
Yeah, so.
Can you imagine that with all those traffic lights all together?
We asked about the buses, we asked about everything else.
Okay.
So we have to, we have to be prepared for all this stuff when those houses come for the next four years.
Well, may I point out something that the mayor said last night? And correct me if I'm wrong, Marissa, because you were there, and so were you and Mr. Thomas. She said, when all this chaos happened, basically, when they were opening up Brightmore in my place, she said, now she sees, when she goes by every morning, three children standing on the corner. So that doesn't mean because you're gonna have these places, you're gonna have tons of children.
Right.
That's what she said.
Exactly.
Oh.
But, because, Mr. President?
Yes.
Because some of the parents, even though they make moving in and all, but they put their children in other schools also.
Yes, I, that's the other thing we have to look at, too. I actually talked to CCTS, one of their board members. We have three hundred and two Winslow students going to CCTS.
That's what I'm saying.
So I made sure I, not, not realizing that this was gonna come up tonight, but that's one of the things I asked the CCTS board member to look out for.
And, 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 Mr. President, I think we're, we're all right. Nobody's wrong. And all our concerns are right. But there, but there's more mechanism than just looking at a bus stop or just seeing something build over there. I mean, I'm, and, and, and it comes down to the dollars and cents, for, for instance, and I'm, to Gary, Gary, you could tell me I'm wrong, but you know, you're a number-one realtor in South Jersey. Right now, our home values are up.
Thank you for the shameless plug, I appreciate it.
Our home values is up and has been up since the last five years. So let's hypothetically, and I know we don't do the hypothetical, but to say if we do get a prison, a prison, which could bring our home values down, but increase our population, that means if our home values comes down, our sex taxes won't be the same, but we'll be, have to cater into more people. So it's a lot of things that go in that equa- equation, just to pick out one or two and say it's that, it's not ac- not ac- accurate. That's why we need to get in the room with all the equations, all the names and everybody, and figure out how we go together, u- unity in the room. And then we haven't had that meeting with the township, but anybody that I know of. So when does, that's what I'm pressing for, that we get in the room, put all the facts on the table, and come up with a conclusive decision, right?
I mean, well taken, and we will try to make that happen sooner than later. And when I say sooner, I'm talking October.
All right, Gary.
So thank you very much, Mr. Thomas, and we will move on that as fast as possible. As far as the planning board, I will have their report on the, at the next board meeting, um, because we have a planning board meeting next, next week on Thursday. So I will have something at our, at our September twenty-fourth meeting. Moving on to our superintendent's report, can I have a motion on our superintendent's report as is recommended, uh, for approval by the superintendent, starting on the middle of page three, moving all the way to the middle of page five?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the superintendent's report as it appears, beginning at the middle of page three, and continuing, continuing to, through to the middle of page five.
Redden, second.
Any questions? All right, no questions, roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Redden?
Yes.
Ms. Claude?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
The motion has carried.
Moving on to our business administrator board secretary's report. Can I have a motion to approve our business administration, business administrator board secretary's report as it's recommended for approval by our business administrator board secretary? Starting on the middle of page five, so all the way through our, uh, middle of page eleven.
Mr. President, I move that, um, we approve the business administrator board secretary's report as it appears, beginning on the, the middle of page five and continuing through to the top of page eleven.
Redden, second.
Any questions?
I do.
All right, Mr. McManus, go ahead.
If we can go to, uh, page ten, um, would be number twenty-four, uh, for student activity account, high school boys lacrosse, approve the request for a new student activity account for the high school boys lacrosse in the student activity fund. Um, how will this be funded? Funds will be used for recognition's account and sacrifices, as well as team bonding, but how will this be funded?
Fundraisers and donations.
Okay. And then on page ten also, and we'll skip all the way down to the next one in line, uh... Oop, wait a minute, I might have the wrong one. Oh, um, yes, so number twenty-five, uh, authorize the execution of an agreement with the township of Winslow for the provision of police officers. Is there a cost to the district directly?
Yes. It is a hundred and ten thousand dollars. We're paying forty-one percent of the two officers' salary and benefits.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that figure, please?
One hundred and ten thousand dollars. We're contributing forty-one percent of the two officers' salaries and benefits.
Okay, and then, uh, what, their responsibilities would be to the high school and the middle school?
Yes, there's a resource officer in each of the buildings.
And they would be available at any time during school hours?
Yes, they're here.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
And, uh, Mr. McManus, the exhibit showed all the costs, so we, we put the whole contract in there?
Yes, all that, thank you.
You're welcome.
And, uh... Uh, one more, if I could, um, the, uh, renewal of the health insurance broker services?
Yes.
Uh, we got one bid on that?
It's a renewal, so we had gone out for bid, um, and we received the responses from the broker. We're allowed to renew, uh, one, two additional years, but this is the first of that. The, the, uh, rates for both stayed the same. And you'll notice one, we just, we pay, which is fifty thousand.
Correct.
Uh, the other one is, it's paid through the premiums, and the percentage of the premium has remained the same. But if the premium goes up, what they get goes up, but it, it, it flows through, um, our premium.
Thank you. No further questions.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Redden?
Yes.
Ms. Claude?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas? Mr. Thomas, Mr. Thomas. Forgive me, Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Thank you. And Mr. Shaw?
Um, yes, except for, I'm gonna repeat myself on the vendor list for J. Seven Twenty-Seven Preferred Home Healthcare. Moving on to the personnel report, I need a motion to approve the personnel report as is recommended for approval, recommend, as is recommended for approval by the superintendent, excuse me, um, from the middle of page eleven to the bottom of page sixteen.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the personnel report as it appears, uh, at the bottom of page eleven and continues through to the bottom of page sixteen.
Redden, second.
Any questions?
Yes. On page eleven, um, item A, job description, approve the following job description as listed below in the tax exhibit. I don't keep the exhibit, I remember it, or, um, district mail run driver, is this an essential position that needs to be hired right now? Or can it wait till after January, when we find out where our money is?
Yes, I know why she's saying that.
Yes, you know why I'm saying it?
Yeah. The health benefit in Gary's hits in January.
I was, if I may, I would suggest that, could we, uh, table that particular position until the, uh, the new year? Ma'am?
May I respond? That position, um, we need that, because the driver carries the mail throughout the district to run. So we, it used to be in transportation, but we needed the driver, the bus driver. So we pulled that off, and we needed to create this position as a part-time position.
Would that only exacerbate our aforementioned, uh...
We will, we will, we, we will have to cover it, because there's no way to get, um, the mail within the district circulated. So I believe day one, um, it did move, and everybody's going, no one picked up our mail. So we had to get, we have somebody doing it temporarily, uh, but we need this position.
So the current person that delivers the mail, is it the same person who delivers our mails to our house for the agendas on Fridays that you're speaking of?
It would be, yeah.
That was a temporary person.
That's a temporary.
Oh, that's a temporary, so this is that person, so we won't have two, we'll just have one?
Just the one.
All right. So this one is just replacing the temporary, so that temporary will no longer be on our payroll, right?
No, no, the temporary will be, the, the temporary was doing it previously, but it was, um, a position that was placed in that department on a temporary basis and never left, so it's been there. Um, and it causes a lot of overtime on the, uh, she needs, Ms. Walsh needs the driver to be a driver and not pull. So we're going, okay, we'll pull it out, but we needed to create that position, because they pick the mail up here, they take it, there's a ru- a, a run. They take the mail, they'll pick it up here, deliver, pick up and deliver, pick up, sort, pick up, deliver, and then they do a second run, because I was going, hey, I'll try it for one day, but then I'm going, okay, so at the end of the day, what happens to the mail if I'm picking it up? It's not gonna be in my car. So, you know, I was gonna do it, but I, you know, for the, for one day, yeah, it's not my job descrip- description, and you don't want my salary rate riding around picking up mail.
Right.
You know, that, uh, yeah, so we needed to create a position. So in the interim, uh, the department is helping us out, but we need to free up that driver, so that we can, uh, and get...
Go back to where they are and then, okay, all right, now I understand.
It is, it would be a part-time position, there, there are no, uh, benefits.
Thank you for your...
If you don't mind, spoil one more question regarding that, and how would the person be compensated? Like, is there an hourly rate, a stipend?
We're gonna, um, we're going to come up with a salary, like, and it's gonna be a twelve-month position.
Okay, and then that will be presented to the board for confirmation?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Any more questions?
One. On, uh, page thirteen of, of the report number A, I mean, I'm sorry, page thirteen, uh, number eight, um, uh, where it says Title I, ESEA grants for fiscal year. Um, in here we have, uh, the first name on the list looks familiar, uh, because of our, we, um, our board here. Um, the percent of the salary, is that going to be in addition to Ms. Clement's current new position?
Yeah, dream on, Ms. Clement. Let's vote for that.
No.
I'm sorry, Ms. Clement, but in light of the previous conversations that this board has had, I'm not sure that that's gonna happen. No, I'm sorry, Ms. Clement, but in light of previous conversations that this board has had, I'm not sure that that's gonna happen. So, but if you don't mind, like, how does that figure out?
I believe this is basically where Ms. Clement, it's going to cover July and all of them.
Pass, okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Nice try, though. Any other questions?
No, just a comment.
Okay.
Page twelve, number seven, which would help with our assessment. I'd like to applaud you for the English enrichment at the high school level that's coming out of their grants. So hopefully our test scores will be increased by that amount. We'll see at the end of, we'll see in September when we get the results. A year from now.
Any other questions, comments, sir?
Yes, Mr. President. Page sixteen, number eleven. Twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six graduation cohort tracking team. What exactly are they tracking? The seniors?
So they are tracking the graduation rate of the students as they enter from ninth graders through twelfth graders.
Okay.
And through the title one funds that are assigned to the high school. That team is funded through there to address some of the concerns that has been raised about.
Okay, thank you.
And I have one more question. In regards, this is, you know, there's no stupid questions except the ones you don't ask, so I'm gonna ask this question anyway. So I see, like, even under the ELE Training Academy on page thirteen, nine, and then even the one Ms. Martin just mentioned on page sixteen, eleven, on that underlying, it says, underlying, on an as-needed basis. Is there a threshold, a budget threshold that we have set to make sure that we don't cut, we don't go over the budget threshold, just in case we need more than what we thought we need? And once at the end of the school year, do you all have a line item report to show us how much you spent? And how many teachers were actually utilized that we paid throughout the year for this as-needed basis?
Yeah, you'll see. So Ms. Claude, you see that this account number starts with the twenty? And we were supposed to have a little discussion, but I haven't had the time.
Twenty, you had that discussion with me, you won't be getting all these questions at the door.
If I sit here silent, it falls to Sharice. I would answer you.
But go ahead.
Twenty is a grant. So in the grant, they write out what their expectation is. So they have a budget amount. If we wanna go back and look at it, we can always run the line and see how much was expended. And it depends on how much, when they write the grant, how much they think that they're gonna need. So the grant administrator actually sets up the budget we can track.
We do, there's a finite amount of money on those lines and we do track. It's on an as-needed basis so that we don't go over those budget lines. And as the vouchers come in, we track those and we say, okay, we had ten dollars, we're at seven dollars and fifty cents. We need to wrap up what we're doing or we can keep going for a little while longer. So we track that very, very closely to make sure that we're not over-expending the federal funds that are allotted to us.
Okay, and then to save the grant money that we do have, if, so is it using lose? So we don't, so we'll lose the money, so we are making sure that we are using it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, I'm putting him first.
No, you're fine.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Redden?
Yes.
Ms. Claude?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
The motion has carried.
Moving on to the addendum. Everybody, if you haven't had a chance to look at your addendum, please take a couple of, about a minute to look at your addendum. And we'll start the addendum. Can I have a motion to approve the Board Secretary's report as it's recommended for approval by the Business Administrator Board Secretary from the beginning of page one to the middle of page four?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the motion to accept the Board Secretary's report as it begins on page one and continues through to the top of page four.
Reddick second.
Any questions? Just the one, where it says vendor, I'm sorry, page one, A to A chart that we see there on the front of the page. That's a variable cost depending upon the number of licenses that are being used at the time. So those figures can actually be reduced. More of a statement, I guess, is that true?
I see what you're saying, up to thirteen hundred, up to thirteen hundred, four dollars each. I think the cap is the fifty, fifty-two?
Right.
On each, so.
So say if we have a thousand, it would be four thousand instead of fifty-two hundred?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Redden?
Yes.
Ms. Claude?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Redden? Peterson, Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitts?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Motion has carried.
Moving on to the personnel report. May I have a motion to approve the personnel report as it's recommended for approval by the superintendent on page five?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the personnel report as it appears on the addendum, beginning and ending on page five.
Reddick second.
Any questions?
Yes, I do.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, I will be abstaining from personnel report, item A one. But I do have a question on central office administrators pertaining to the contract. Can I ask that question publicly or no?
Mr. Long?
I don't know what the question is, Mr. Thomas.
Well, I'm going with.
You ask it, I can.
Under, under, under number nine, termination of employee, number C, early termination. Can I get some explanation on how that, what is that and how's that?
He's looking at the actual exhibit.
Do we vote on it, then, we can, he can ask, so that way we have the contract approved? Or do we, can he ask?
Well, this is assistant superintendent which doesn't conflict.
Oh, okay. So.
You can answer that question.
Termination of employment, number nine, section C, where it says, I believe, sixty-day mutual, mutual contract. Either party, how does that work? Well, section B, it's a unilateral termination by the assistant superintendent.
Unilateral means she's, she quits. I quit and she has to give us a number of days, you know.
I, I, I understand that, so how, so it's unilateral and so can we give a sixty-day notice?
You're saying, can we turn around and say, you're out of here?
Correct.
Mr. Long?
The next section.
So the assistant superintendent may terminate this existing contract by giving as much advance notice as possible, but she must give at least sixty days written notice to the board in the event she decided to invoke the unilateral termination set forth in nine B.
So the question is, can the board do the same?
Yes, I understand.
I'm just asking a question.
Not without, not without cause.
So what would those causes be?
There are multiple causes. Usually, in order to terminate someone, you would need just cause. That's typically defined as misfeasance or malfeasance in office. Making mistakes, being absent for an extensive period of time without having the ability to take that time.
So any form of insubordination?
Correct.
I would have preferred to have that in there. So it wouldn't leave us in a position where, say, we paying for two assistants to get to.
The reason it may not be in there, Mr. Thomas, and I have not reviewed Ms. Clement's contract and I'm seeing it for the first time tonight.
We all are.
And with respect to her, her, her particular contract, there, there's a, the reason it may not be in there is because there's a body of law. We can always terminate Ms. Clement or call it just cause.
What, from two salaries?
I'm, I'm just saying, usually in a contract, if it's not in there, there's a gray area. I mean, I'm just, I just, just, I know, you know, I'm trying to see how we got to this position and and it's just a standard contract across the board.
It is the standard contract.
So there's no, there's no way to put that in there, there's nowhere, that's why, we're just seeing it too. So if, if it was a business, I, I would wanna see it at least forty-eight hours before we sign. But I'm, I just had a question there, I mean, once again, I'm staying, but that is a question of, of seems like, it looks like it's one-sided where they, they can quit us, but we can't quit them, that's all I'm saying.
We can quit them with, with just cause under the law.
And we don't know what, and the causes are not in there because then that's gonna be another debate, whether the just cause or was it not a just cause.
So New Jersey state law takes, and trumps, takes priority over any contract.
Excuse me, Mr. Long, this contract was, it was approved by the executive county suit?
It was.
It does say on page two, number two, two ways, that she must hold a valid or the position must hold a valid and appropriate certificate to access the assistant superintendent's board. In the event the certificate is revoked or in any way deemed invalid, the terms of agreement are null and void.
And, and that's fine, once again, I'm just trying to protect the student, the leadership, so.
The, the law would govern her termination, not, not a contract.
I don't, I don't, so why have a contract?
For all the other provisions in there. Some of those provisions are not provided for by law.
Counselor, if I could pose a question?
Sure.
Under the early termination section, there's statutes listed, NJ SLA eighteen A, seventeen to twenty-two A, and then NJ AC six A, twenty-three A, three point two. Would they, would that be the list to your knowledge of what the offenses might be for early termination?
I, I'd have to, I'd have to look at, I'd have to look at it. I can't give you that answer, but I can certainly look it up, I think.
All right.
It has to do with, I believe that's a section where if someone, if there was a termination position where there was a mutual termination position, you can only pay on that contract if you, if you agree, if you're in agreeable situation, that I think that guides how much you could pay at the end of someone's contract. For example, for each year that they have left, I think it's like one month pay, depending upon the nature of the contract.
Right.
So I think it's more related to that as opposed to the issue of termination for just cause. I don't think that's, that's not referenced in here, but it clearly exists and we've terminated people from here without it being in the contract for just cause.
All right, thank you.
And I apologize, I only had the first five pages of Ms. Clement's, Ms. Clement's contract. But thank you, Mr. Shaw, for sharing that.
Any other questions?
I don't know if this is the time to say it or ask it, but in the event that we have any other positions that require contracts that have to be signed by the Board of Education to approve on the agenda, I request that it be given to us prior to the meeting, the date of the meeting, so that we have time to read through it and get all the questions that we need to ask, asked prior to coming to the meeting. I found this to be unfair for even me, because I like to read things before I approve them on the agenda. And not having the time to read it, you know, we have questions like that and I don't want Ms. Clement to feel like she's under personal attack from anybody on the board from the questions that we have to ask. We're just asking for legality purposes and for understanding purposes of why we're, we're, when we approve this contract as if the same way we did it with the interim superintendent. We went through his contract prior to bringing it to a board meeting and were able to agree on that contract and then we sent it up to the county superintendent for approval. And now it came back and it's on the same agenda. So I would ask for any contract of any high administrators that we be granted the same because it's in the policy that we have in our book too. The superintendent, deputy superintendent, assistant superintendent in the business administration. Those three positions, we have a right as the board to review those contracts. So I would, I would ask that we see those contracts prior to the meeting so that before we have to vote on them.
I, 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 I would say, I don't do that, I don't put the agenda together, but you, you make a fair point. The only thing that I would add is with Mr. Pease specifically, on that contract, we were directed, no matter what, to get that through as quickly as possible.
Yes.
So on his, on his particular contract, the reason I know that's, that's on tonight's addendum is because we couldn't put it on until we got approval from the county superintendent, which didn't occur until two days ago.
And that's perfectly fine, we were, we were anticipating that to come on this agenda.
Yeah, but we weren't sure.
But we were anticipating it to come on an agenda anytime because we already reviewed the contract as a board.
Right.
Right? I'm just asking that before we, for those positions, we see the contracts prior to coming to a board meeting so that we can review it and get all questions out and answered prior to being in front of the person who the contract was.
You were absolutely entitled to.
So, Ms. Claude?
Yes.
You do understand that we were in a very tight position getting somebody in place so that we could open school? We have been having special meetings and, you know, many, so I think two or three special meetings to get this effectuated. And so I received both approvals on the same day, Monday. If I had gotten them earlier, I would have put them out earlier. So I called Mr. Shaw to say, we have them, do you want us to put them on the addendum? Or is the board gonna think, I'll, I'll just say, they're gonna think we're trying to pull something over on them. The suggestion was, put them on, so we put them on. Just so that, and if you recall, we were discussing getting it approved, approving him and having him start the next day. You know, the contract says the sixteenth, because we were waiting. And it's, so these are unusual circumstances. I cannot show you the, with my understanding, you don't get to see the contract until after the county approves it. Then we can go, here it is. And we had discussed this at the last meeting. If the county approves it, and then you go, nah, I'm not going to do it. Doesn't mean anything. Not until you guys take action. And like I said, we got them. I got the approval letters on Monday in the late afternoon. We sent it up. Remember our meeting was Thursday? I turned around Friday, scanned everything up to the Executive County Superintendent, the Executive County Business Administrator, the contractors, the website where we send contracts up. I sent it to everybody and their grandmothers, the secretaries, everything, and requested a turnaround time. They turned it around Monday night. I was shocked when I saw it.
You're speaking of Mr. Pease's contract? Or are you speaking of both their contracts?
I sent up Mr. Pease.
Right. So we saw that contract before you set that up?
I'm not, I was not aware that you saw that contract.
Yes, we did. Yeah. That's, that's what I'm speaking of. Like, so
Right.
I understand, I understand that we had, we were under crunch time. Right? But I was just asking for the same courtesy. So that, like I said, Ms. Clement is just, was sitting there, and she said, first I was getting a raise, and now I'm talking about termination.
Well, she's joking. She understands.
Joking or not joking, it's still putting her in a position, and it's putting all of, oh, it's putting me, I'm going to speak for myself. It's putting me in a position, right? Because I don't want that to be any kind of communication that she thinks that we're questioning her position as the Assistant Superintendent. It's just that we should have the right to be able to look through something before we agree on it or vote on it. And I don't like signing things or agreeing to things on any part of this agenda without being able to ask questions and and be it, this contract is not one page long. So I had to skim through it. So just like last week with the agenda, I missed something because I looked for a particular thing, but it was there and I voted for it. We talked about this already. It's not, it's no big deal, because I would have said yes anyway, however, it was a question that I asked, and I didn't see it on the agenda. You understand?
Are you talking about his contract?
No, not his contract. I'm talking about, something about, hold on, hold on, Ms. Peterson, you're going to get your, you're going to get your flowers in one second.
I appreciate you.
So, but yeah, I'm not, I'm not, and this is in no way, shape, form an attack on anybody's position of their job, okay? It's just a, it's a simple courtesy to me as a board member and to the rest of my fellow board members that we get an opportunity to be able to read on things that especially there's this detail, and it's important. It's very important.
And Ms. Claude, I got it to you as soon as I could.
Yes.
Which would be tonight. And I, this morning, we sent the addendum out, I think, or the addendum came out earlier than usual, so you could see it. And in case you hadn't, we have them in here. So if you need time, if you want to look through it, I understand entirely. We have a payroll that's getting ready to be run. We'd like to have the approval so that
You can start paying her the right, right salary.
Right amount, yes. So, that's it. And understand, this was quite unusual, these circumstances. We all have been making accommodations, arranging our schedules so that we can be at these meetings. I have given up personal meetings that I have that are set so that I could be in attendance here. The goal was to get them approved. And again, at Mr. Davis's behest, he said, call, you need to call to make sure they want them on tonight. So I called Mr. Shaw. So there was no offense to be taken. And, you know, we did what I thought we were trying to do.
And I commend you on it, just so you know that, because we needed this done. But like I said, it's just I'd like to be able to read. Ms. Peterson, you got the floor?
Well, I, I want to make this a teachable moment, because three of my colleagues here did not receive the interim superintendent's contract. So I kind of speculated that when I heard the vote, you know, abstain, that they didn't get it. So this is a teachable moment. I know it was a difficult time. We're doing a lot of things, and I commend everyone. So the teachable moment tells us that we need to make sure that we allow enough time to, when we're processing, which we couldn't process that had, everything that happened, that we process and allow the time. Same way we use when we negotiate with our units. We see the contract and go over it before we sign off. So I say a teachable moment. If three of them here did not get the interim, it's a teachable moment that we need to now put a chart as we go forward in doing any other personal matters.
Ms. Peterson, and I had this conversation with Ms. Dredon. If they didn't get the interim contract, they should have called me, because I, I made sure everybody was sent the interim contract. And I asked, I said the same thing to Ms. Dredon, right, Ms. Dredon, during our conversation? If they did not get it, when I said I was sending it out to them, they should have called me immediately, and I don't care if it took two days to, to make sure they got it, to call me repeatedly. And I would have, I would have hand-delivered a carrier pigeon, whatever it took, to make sure it was delivered to them. Because I want every board member to have that contract. Because it was my, my personal preference to make sure that everybody had it in hand, so that way they could see it.
But you remember, remember also that I didn't know this was, I came into the meeting. So I didn't know everyone got the contract.
Yeah, well, that, that's one of the things that I wanted to make sure everybody had, so I didn't want anybody voting on something that they didn't see. And even if you didn't come here physically, I would have drove it to your house before I came here to make sure that you had it firsthand.
So I could call you.
Well, you could.
No, no, no. I didn't know we got here that we were receiving it. On my phone, I looked in my email, I didn't see it. I came here searching my junk mail, I did it all, but I did not find it.
I'll go back and double check my phone, make sure that whoever didn't get it, I'll go back and check my phone, make sure that it was emailed to everybody. Because I made sure I emailed every single board member.
I think it's the timing. So I thank everyone, because this is a, a teachable moment. Things happen, and we were busy. So I thank everyone for doing their due diligence or trying to do it. And going forward, we will make sure we do better.
Ms. Dredon, you didn't get an email from Ms. McQuarrie with the addendum today?
No, 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 that wasn't it.
No, she's talking about before our special meeting.
I got that. Oh, before the special meeting?
If I can ask a question, Counselor? If, if, if we have a problem with this in the future, it is possible to have an emergency meeting on a different day to expedite the matter?
Yeah, always. But if, if it fits the definition of a legal emergency. It can't be, you can do it repeatedly, because that is really not an emergency. It's just not working into your schedule. You might have to change your schedule at a meeting, do whatever you have to do.
Sure.
But you can, if there's an emergency situation, typically what we try and do is you can have a meeting upon forty-eight hours advanced notice to the paper, not publication. You fax it to them, or you email them to them at a certain time. Forty-eight hours from that moment, you may have a meeting. Otherwise, if it's a true emergency, which is defined by the law, we can meet, and we can make a decision and advertise after the fact that we did call an emergency meeting. But we do have to advertise it after we meet. In that circumstance.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Long, long answer was that. Short answer is yes.
Well, Counselor, I'm going to go on record this evening as appreciating you and your firmness to be able to clear away any fog that may be existing in the McMinnis.
And while there's a lot of fog there too, so.
Any more questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Dredon?
Yes.
Ms. Claude?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Pitt?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Abstaining.
And Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
The motion has carried.
I just want to thank everybody, if I may, Mr. President. We had meeting after meeting after meeting, and special meeting, and committee meetings, and Peterson came in on television, Zoom, to participate. Between the date of June twenty-seventh and August twenty-seventh, we had a lot of work to do. We were in a scary situation with Dr. Potte being out on the leave, and now it's been extended, which we discussed the two prior meetings. And we had, we were losing Dr. Clarkamo as well, with a well-known end of retirement date. And to be able to pull this off in the time that we did, and the meetings that we have, I mean, we met on July third, July seventh, July ninth, July fifteenth, July seventeenth, August thirteenth, August nineteenth, August twenty-first, August twenty-seventh. Now, that's either the committee, me and you, in my office, Dr. Potte in my office, Dr. Clarkamo in her office, there are all those meetings that took place to put all this together. And I appreciate the board's patience in letting us get the work done, so that we are now very, very fortunate to have Ms. Clement here and be able to fill in like Dr. Clarkamo did. And I got to tell you, from conversations that we've been having, hasn't missed a beat. She has not missed a beat. She knows what she's doing, and she's not playing. I got to be honest with you. She's not playing. And now it looks like we have an interim superintendent who I never thought we would be starting on Monday. I mean, I never thought we would get to that point, but I'm very happy that we are, that this, this covered. What is it, Tuesday? Yeah, Tuesday. Very happy to, don't hold me on Monday, Tuesday. That we were able to, to get through this situation in the way they did, or we did. It was a lot of sacrifice from a lot of people, and I appreciate it. And then negotiations went so well that even, I think ultimately, Mrs. Pitts would even agree with the compensation package, along with some others who had some concerns.
I just want to throw in there that thank God we don't have a minutes plan anymore on cell phones, because my cellphone bill would have been for the roof. Because I think the board members are probably tired of hearing my voice on the phone at least four or five times a week. We did a lot of communication in the last two and a half months. We did a lot of work to get where we are right now, to have Ms. Clements sitting next to me, to have Mr. Pease starting on Tuesday. Each and every board member participated actively. Mr. Thomas, I know your patience sitting there. And it, I can't thank you enough for doing the incredible job of being patient. And I appreciate you for doing that. I know how hard it was. But I can't thank you enough for doing that hard work. But, you know, now we are where we are, and you can take that Winslow winning and show Mr. Pease how Winslow proud we are. But every board member here did an amazing job getting us to this point. I can't say thank you enough. And with the team of Mr. Pease and Ms. Clement, I'm sure that this school year is going to be absolutely fabulous. And I can't wait for everybody in this district to meet Mr. Pease, because he's going to be phenomenal for everybody here.
And our, and our biggest, if I may, task is yet to come, which is, long-term, what are we looking at? What are we looking at long-term, Superintendent? And I know, Mr. Shaw, you and I have discussed that. You've got a packet of information. I know I gave it out to the committee. I think it was, it may have been in that package we did at the interviews as well. But again, it, it gives us some insight as to what's coming next. You know, when you start that, you know, we, we want to make sure that that's in place come the end of our book year, which is June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. July one, we want to be able to hit the ground and have someone in place.
Also, by the first meeting of October, I have dates that NJ SBA and I have set up for us to get together, and for November and December. You know, for our field service rep to sit down with us.
And you said, Mr. Shaw, that you have those dates ready, so you will share those dates with us?
I have them. I figured I would give everybody a breath of fresh air for the next couple of weeks, and then I will put those dates out, the first meeting in October.
Great. Because we always say, what do we get to do as board members? What do we get to do? What do we get to do? It doesn't seem like we get to do a lot. This is your time. This is the thing that you do, which is pick that superintendent for the benefit of everybody in this town.
Yes, Ms. Morton.
From the state of New Jersey. Her letter states, therefore, I approve the contract for a period commencing September first, two thousand twenty-five through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six. If there are any changes to the terms of this contract, you will need to submit it to my office for review and approval. Start date, I heard you say Tuesday. That would be September sixteen. This, that doesn't apply to this. Whose letter is that?
This is from, no, it's in reference to?
To Mr. Pease.
Mr. Pease, yes. When we sent the contract up, there were no dates, because we did not know when he was going to start. In my email, right, when I sent it, I said, we are tentatively starting him nine sixteen. Part of the
Okay, so we don't have to, we don't have to send it.
And you remember, we were going to go, we were trying to go September one, and we couldn't get that. As hard as we tried, we couldn't. And through August thirty-first, with the county, it's some early intel that we got, as I was negotiating with Mr. Pease.
Right.
We found out that they would not approve anything past June. So his salary would be prorated. It would not be a twelve-month, it would be a ten-month. So he would, there would be some shrinkage there in terms of his salary to fit the ten-month, which I know made everybody, came in even under the number that we wanted to come in at, and very comfortable moving forward with that.
Thank you.
Recommendation.
So we go to the Public Records Act? Informational items? All right. Old business?
Oh, I have an informational item.
Okay.
So I started going to the back-to-school nights, because I just feel obligated as a board member. I just want to say that the turnout at these back-to-school nights is astronomical. And so while we have our parents hot and involved and engaged with our children, we need to keep that momentum going from our administration on down, to make sure that our parents stay engaged.
Which ones did you go to?
I went to school one, and Mr. Thomas went to the high school and the middle school. I was at another meeting last, the high schools last night, I was at another meeting last night, so I couldn't attend. But I plan to attend every one that I'm available to attend, if they're not back-to-back on the same date. So I just want us to make sure that I enjoyed walking around. I just walked around, and I listened to the teachers talk to the parents. The teachers were upbeat. No, I went to school three. I apologize. It was school three. I went to school three, and the teachers and the whole staff there was just so welcoming in that school, and parents were smiling, teachers were smiling, and they were giving parents informational tools to help their kids at home, to help them do the homework with the new math. So that is, is not just elementary, but when I heard the turnout, the high school was great last night. And we were talking about how, once the kids get out of elementary school, they hit middle school, starts dwindling off. Well, and parents are now starting to get back engaged again. We need to keep that momentum going, because if we do, we'll have less work for Mr. Davis with the HIV reports, okay? We'll have less work dealing with putting out fires, but we'll have more time to give more accolades and more praises to our students and our staff. And that's my informational item on that.
Thank you, Ms. Claude. Old business?
New business.
Oh, I do have old business, I'm sorry. Ms. Clement, I heard that you said you have a meeting on, on Monday with the auditors. Am I correct for the technology audit?
The meeting is Monday.
Is there a way that you can set that meeting where the interim superintendent can be present with you so that he hears everything that's going on being as though that that's going to be something that affects the whole school at that time? Is that possible or no? Whenever the date he comes on, she, the meeting is on Monday, he's not gonna be here.
Right.
No, he won't be here Tuesday.
He started Wednesday. She was asked that if he could be here on Monday.
If she can kind of, if she can reschedule that meeting while he's here so that he could be a part of the conversation that's going on with the technology audit.
That would be the first meeting, Ms. Clement.
Okay.
From all that I've heard, I, I didn't know if you would want me to push that meeting back when we finally secure it. But if that's the pleasure of the board, then we'll, we'll try to, try to do that.
Well.
I'm an excellent note taker.
Since you, since you, since you put it that way, I don't want anything to push it back any further because we're three months behind on it. So I'd rather you go ahead and take good notes like you said you was just going to. And let's move it forward, but the next meeting, cause I, I want that to be a collaborative thing with you all to make sure that we get this technology audit done. Because state testing is gonna come up again, and I want to get whatever nicks and crannies we have out the way. So that our kids are not suffering like we did last year, we had to postpone it a little bit, whether it was last year or the last year before last. Whatever it was, we had to postpone the state test because we had internet issues. And it wasn't the phone, okay, so, yeah, so I just want to make sure that that's in place. Thank you.
Is it possible to have that meeting recorded so that, um, you won't lose the gist of what's going on? So it's recorded so that both, um.
They may have some proprietary issues in terms of how they operate their business. Not sure that they would not necessarily agree to that.
But you can check into it.
You can look into it.
So you'd be willing to look into it?
Ms. Peterson? I will ask.
And you know, I know that you will probably be with our technology.
I will.
I'm smiling, so that'll be your right hand.
Yes, thank you.
Any other old business? New business?
The school.
No, I'm fine.
Good guess. Public comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Winslow Town Board of Education highly values the input of citizens and making the important decisions that affect the children of our community. We also believe in the rights of citizens to observe board meetings, to ensure that all of our citizens have the opportunity to attend school board meetings and offer comment, and to ensure that the board can conduct the important business of the district. We'd ask speakers follow the following guidelines for making public comment. The board secretary will recognize those individuals in the audience who wish to make public comment. We ask that you respect the following procedures. One, all members of the public attending school board meetings must treat each other and the board with respect. Two, please state your name and town of residence. Three, please limit your comments to four minutes and only timing. Number four, submit your questions to the board in the event we're unable to answer them tonight with your, well, with your name, address, telephone number, and hopefully email address where you can be contacted and your questions will indeed be answered within a reasonable timeframe. And lastly, individuals offering citizen comment are not permitted to make personal attacks on any district employee or member, other testifier, or member of the public. Thank you, sir.
We have a motion to approve public comments.
I move that the board approves, um, of moving into public comment.
In second.
All in favor?
Aye. Mr. Patrick Oats.
Good evening, how's everybody? Three hours late, so as the preacher said, that won't be too long. But that's one of the segues I had about the technology survey, I think. It was around May, I think it was, the, the gentlemen came in, they talked about the technology survey. So I wanted to get an update because I haven't heard about it, um, how we're doing with it and sounds like it hasn't started yet. So here's a couple of questions. Did it start yet? When? Is it gonna start? How is it gonna happen? Then the other thing is, which, not understanding, we have X amount of monies that we spent on this technology survey, but there's gonna be no remediation. So they're gonna tell us what's wrong and then we're gonna have to go out and even hire the same folks or someone else to come in and remediate or with their findings. And as far as videotaping it, some of the things that they're looking at your system and looking at network things, yeah, that wouldn't be recorded because you don't want to give away some of your IP addresses and some of your network infrastructure. So I don't think they're gonna record that. So that's, I had three questions, but that's one. If you can address, I don't know if you want to go to the next thing or should I pause for the question?
Well, the first meeting will be Monday. There has not been anything that has occurred prior to that. And we will take the next steps after that meeting.
Okay. So they're gonna be, also, they're gonna have their laptops, they're gonna do a heat sink or heat maps of the area in the classrooms and hopefully they won't disturb the students too much as they're going around taking, checking the signals and stuff like that for inside of classrooms and stuff like that. I mean, that's one of the questions that I would ask them to see how intrusive it is as far as that. Uh, the second thing is, well, not the second thing, but listening to you guys, you guys ought to be commended as a resident here at Winslow Township. The son that goes to school number four for you guys to do what you did as far as the superintendent and the assistant. You guys ought to be commended, so I commend you for the work that you're doing and it's noticed throughout the community, so I want to say thank you for that. Second thing was, there was a meeting where the athletic director came in and I want to know the status about the conference. Uh, they were talking about for soccer and baseball, going to the Olympic, I think norm or something like that, kind of regentable. Not sure that I agree with that, but, um, I mean, we can do well in football. We should be, we should do well in soccer and baseball and one of the things that disturbs me is that she's mentioned that some of the coaches were feeling like they had, um, I don't know the right word, but I want, I don't want to say emotional issues, but they felt, they just didn't. You guys remember the conversation, but they just did not, um, almost they seemed happy or like they, I don't know what it was, but it was kind of sad to hear what she had to say. I'd like to know the status if, if we did go to a new conference. Or where we're at with that.
If we, if we want to get the information, if we can certainly do that if we're aware, I know this is like your second day.
It is, so Mr. Oats, I don't have all the answers today. I can get back to you, uh, I'll have a conversation with Ms. Lane and then perhaps our, our next meeting, I can have an answer for you, sir.
Thank you, this also with your salary, right? No.
They already took the double.
And so the last thing with your HIV reports, and this is for the HR and yourself. Um, what type of measures do you have for your classroom environments? Do you guys have school security officers? That's number one. Number two, do you have a program like Safe to Stay where, uh, ki- kids can anonymously drop notes if they see something, say something uh, for their environment? And do you also have any kind of positive behaviors or interactive supports? You know, where it creates the safe, safe learning environment?
So we do have security officers and there are, as I mentioned earlier, social emotional movements in each of our schools. In fact, for all of our school-wide plans, it's usually one of our, uh, four tenants or four objectives that we work on. Uh, there are spaces in some of the classrooms, especially in the lower elementary school, you'll see safe places or spaces inside of the classrooms for children to, um, release or reduce or to just take some time to themselves. Our preschool program, there's a whole social emotional, uh, component called conscious discipline. Um, I have not heard of the, the component that you just mentioned. However, there are provisions with the school counselors, as I mentioned earlier, for them, the students within the schools to be able to safely and sometimes anonymously say what they need to say.
Yes, I can definitely provide some information on the Safe to Stay, but it's a pretty good program. I know they use it somewhere in Philadelphia and some of the schools and, uh, it gives the kids an opportunity or an opportunity to drop a note or something that if they don't want to say something public, you know, there, there's something coming behind the scenes and then you may get a little more participation. But that is, I'm finished, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oats.
Joe Thomas?
He's using the restroom.
How is this, are Joe Thomas, why would you? Is there another Mr. Joe Thomas?
Maybe he's coming in on a margin. I'm just floating around out there, is there? There actually is, there actually is. I, I ran into him, he, uh, superintendent or project manager for a construction company.
Should we wait for Mr. Thomas to come back?
He is coming back, but I don't know how long. Better be quick.
Four minutes.
I was gonna say it starts in four minutes.
Here he comes.
Yep.
Thank you. Good evening. I stand before you and not as a board member, engaged in confidential deliberation, but as a community stakeholder, a fifty-five-year resident, a local business owner, a multi-property taxpayer, a proud nineteen eighty-three Edgewood grad. Nineteen eighty-three. And the founder of the Winslow Fan Club. In those roles, I stand equal to every parent, teacher, and resident in Winslow Township who has a right to know where our district leadership stands. Under state law, I have accused myself of matters concerning the superintendent. That be curiosally means I am no more entitled confidential details than the public. But it also means I have every right, just like the public, to ask clear questions about the leadership of our schools and to expect transparent answers. First, I must ask about the status of our existing superintendent. Parents, staff, and the broader community deserve clarity in whether the current superintendent remains in place, has stepped aside, or is in some other status that directly affects leadership. This is not a private matter, it's a fundamental question of accountability and stability at the top of our district. Second, the board needs to move forward behind of assistant superintendent. That was a major decision that the process by which the hire was completed has not been made fully clear to the public. Were the proper procedures followed? What criteria guided the selection? And how was the decision communicated to the stakeholders who depend on that leadership? Third, this board has also developed and approved a job description for our interim superintendent. The public deserves to know. How was this description formed? What input shaped it? Had the interim superintendent actually been appointed? If so, who it is? Why it has not been clearly shared? Or not, what is the timeline of the process moving forward? And yes, I do see as of today, September tenth, twenty twenty-five, superintendent contract has been submitted to us for review. Yet three hours later, there is still no clarity on how or why we got there. The public deserved to understand the process, the reasoning, and the path forward. Not simply be presented with the documents, absent explanation. These questions are not about sitting in and saying, "Listen." They are about the right of the public and by the extension, conflicted members of the board now speaking as stakeholders to know the status of outcomes, directions, of decisions that shape our children's education and district stability. Winslow Township has always prided itself in being second to none, whether in academics, athletics, or now community spirit. But their strength relies on leadership that is clear and accountable and transparent. And being transparent, including the community may be difficult at times, but it is not only needed, it is required. Tonight, I call for the board to provide to the public what they can and should be sharing. This is not only about compliance in the law, this is about restoring and maintaining the trust and governance of our school for the sake of every student, every staff member, and every taxpayer in Winslow Township. Thank you.
So, Mr. Thomas, to answer your questions from the very beginning, when we approved the superintendent's medical leave, he's still our superintendent until the day that we approved that he isn't. Um, we've approved his medical leave twice, all the way through the end of March. We're still in the process of working with him. And that's as far as we legally can allow ourselves to talk about it by, by advice of our solicitor. Every step of the way, we've had meetings in public with those, um, approvals as far as going forward with the meeting, uh, the assistant superintendent. We had we had a, as a board, we, well, go ahead, Mrs. Pitts, if you're trying to, if you need to interrupt, we go ahead.
No, I don't want to interrupt, I, I actually wanted to say something prior to you beginning. I'm asking, um, our solicitor, because I'm kind of confused. What Mr. Thomas just did, it appears to me that he weaved in and out from, that is, from being a board member, then being a resident, now we're all residents, of course, and we're elected board members. But, but some of the statements that he made are statements that would have, that has something to do with the, um, superintendent's search, the interim superintendent, which of course, because he is on the board member's side, he is conflicted with, as any of us would be, because he has a relative here that would be supervised by the new superintendent. I'm just asking for whether or not protocol has been followed. And I'm, and I'm asking this question of our attorney with regards to what we just witnessed Mr. Thomas did. I need to know going forward whether or not that action was in line with, with, with the procedures of a board member? Because I'm not clear.
Mrs. Pitts, I'm not gonna answer that question. I've, I've, I've written to Mr. Thomas and informed him of his obligations.
Thank you.
Every step of the way, we've communicated with the board. I've made sure I've attempted to communicate with you with everything I possibly can legally to let you know where we are. I've made sure that during the board meetings, the, everything that needs to be on the agenda that the public can see. We, we made sure that the pub were as transparent as possible because that's the one thing that I make sure that we, that our board is, I make sure every time a board member needs a, uh, wants to ask a question on every section of the agenda, that it's there all the way through. So when it comes to every step to finding the assistant superintendent. So when it comes to every step to finding the assistant superintendent, or however it, it is, as, as we've gotten to, we've had meetings for every step, every step of the way for the interim superintendent, to where we've gotten to this point so far. I, and I've made sure I've checked myself, not only with the solicitor, but also with our New Jersey field, uh, school boards field service rep and their legal team. So we've gotten to this point, not by me just following what our board solicitor has said, but by me making sure that I've got an outside counsel at New Jersey School Boards to make sure that every stakeholder would have transparency, every board member would have transparency. Because I want to make sure that we end up with a board and a community that has all the answers that they possibly need to put us in the best possible position to have our district move forward and have all the answers that they are required to have by law. And to satisfy every single need that they have. Cause I want every single student, every single teacher, every single staff member, every single administrator in this school district, and every single board member that's making these decisions for our superintendent and assistant superintendent, uh, hires to have every tool that they have necessary to make the best possible decision, to have our student achievement, achievement levels move forward to make Winslow Township the most winningest district in the state of New Jersey and the United States of America. So I'm hoping that answers your question, because you as my, as a vice president of this board, we don't succeed if you and I aren't in lockstep.
Thanks for the clarity, sir.
And if anybody else in, in the public, or if they're watching online, has any questions of me and how we got here, please feel free to ask.
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
In the middle of the process of hiring assistant superintendent and interim superintendent, the board did everything by policy and protocol once we were notified that we had to start the process. And once we started the process, we did everything due diligence, we did our due diligence to make sure that we, um, did the process the way we were supposed to, through interview process, through vetting process. And so this is the results that we received, this is what we voted on, and now this is what we have. So we have Ms. Clemmons as our assistant superintendent, and we have Mr. Mark Pease, who's gonna be our interim superintendent for the duration of the contract. And as of the sixteenth of September, you can meet Mr. Pease or the next board meeting we have, you'll be able to meet Mr. Pease in the body flesh, so that you can introduce yourself or get to know him. Um, but the district, the board, we made the best possible selections that we could to make sure that our district is gonna run forward and run fast and be on time and be competitive to the rest of the districts around us. So we trusted the process, and hopefully we can trust our, our decisions on making who we made and our administrative, um, positions that we made. Thank you.
That's your welcome. I know going forward, I know that our Winslow winning member over here to my, my left is gonna be working really, really hard with our, our new administration, and it's gonna make Winslow very, very proud and very successful, because we have, it's gonna, it's gonna be a top-notch team at the top. And a lot of people are gonna be very proud with Ms. Clemmons and Mr. Pease. So Mr. Thomas is gonna be, he gonna be overjoyed along with the rest of the board. I look forward to what the future is about to bring us, and I can't wait, I'm fully excited for both of the, both of our new leaders at the top. If, is there anybody else that we have signed up for public comments?
Anybody, nobody signed up, anybody in the waiting room?
Yeah, that was time.
Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn public comments?
I move that we adjourn public comments, Mr. President?
In a second.
Any, uh, all in favor? Executive session?
Yes, sir, and according to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, we'll be entering into executive session on September tenth, twenty twenty-five at nine fifteen PM. Of the nine exceptions, we'll be utilizing two. One having to do with matters involving confidentiality, which are, uh, student matter. That spoil has brought to my attention, um, before the meeting, and matters of conditions of employment, number eight. I would anticipate that we will be in executive session for thirty to forty-five minutes. There may or may not be actually thinking coming out of there for session.
Can I have a motion to approve us moving into executive session?
I move that we, um, move into executive session.
You have a second.
All in favor? I mean, I'm sorry, roll call.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Mark? Yes, Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Peter?
Yes.
Ms. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
And Mr. Joe?
Yes.